Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Meeting is called to order and I apologize for the late start of work session. We had other business to take care of and as it sometimes does ran us over just a little bit. However, we will follow the agenda as printed and posted, beginning with item 3.01. Of course, last week, we had a pretty robust discussion concerning our budget amendments and we agreed that we would take the first part of today's work session to finalize the business of adopting the budget for this year. It is important that we close this issue today. We originally were scheduled to vote on today and I think that we definitely need to decide the matter of facts aren't going to change, but I know we all want to be very comfortable and clear on the decision we make and the impact that it will have for our business and work for next year. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of board, administration and guests. Of course, at the direction of the board, the team has gone away following the previous session to review the items of importance and to continue to do a deep dive in reference to our needs and attempting to ensure that any decision or recommendation that we bring forward or roll out, that it is linked to our priorities and linked to the strategic plan and that we work to have the least impact on the classroom and the bottom line for students. And so, as I speak to the choir, so to speak, that becomes a more difficult undertaking each year, but decisions have been made to the level that we are able to bring forth some recommendations for you and that will provide you with information that will hopefully help us approve our budget today, if it is the wish of the board. With that said, I will defer to Dr. Thornton to fill us in.
All right. Thank you, Dr. King. Dr. Houston, school board members, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You have at your place three one-page documents, the first of which is an updated version of the budget change summary that we've been working on, most recently last week. The second document that you have at your place is, in the event the board is prepared to act and approve the budget, you have a document that summarizes the four major funds that would represent your amended budget contingent upon your action, of course, following our discussion. And then the third page would be a narrative of the recommended action to approve the amended budget as currently presented to the board this afternoon. So with that being said, I will again go back to the first document, which is the budget change summary. Of course, when we met last week, we updated the board that following city council appropriation action, the total available revenue from all sources within the operating budget for next year is $317.6 million. And from that point, our challenge was to balance the budget because you have to take action on a budget that is balanced within that $317.6 million. So we went through several adjustments last week and the board did make the decision that it would place on hold, if you will, pending the final outcome of the state budget situation, the plans related to the open campus academy. So that was estimated to cost approximately $1.3 million in terms of the budget for next year, so we placed it on hold and then the remaining gap was approximately $1.1 million. So the board directed superintendent to go back and bring forth, after several discussions last week, to bring forth recommendations as to how to close the remaining gap. And we have presented for you today a strategy that will close the remaining gap, so the document that you have before you today represents a balanced budget after making those adjustments. So we don't, at this point, we're not recommending any additional adjustments to the revenue budget because, again, we have to stay within the appropriation that the city council made on May the 20th. So we'll go down to the second box and again, just highlight for you, unless you have some specific questions, we'll highlight for you the adjustments to the basic expenditure budget, again, beginning with employee benefits. You can see it's just a very minor adjustment of $3,160 and that takes into account the very nominal change in the VRS rate that the board acted on at its last business meeting.
Dr. Thornton, excuse me, I would just encourage that you would share all of those things that have changed since last week.
Okay, all right. Good. All right. So I'll direct your attention down to the debt service, construction, technology, infrastructure, where you see it's the second box of highlighted lines and that is an adjustment just to align with the amount that the city has appropriated for next year for construction, technology, infrastructure. When we presented last week, we had not presented that number to you, but that's just to balance with what the city is going to appropriate. The next item is the result of conversation we had last week where we would recommend that five of the 10 planned school nurse positions be placed, again, on hold, if you will, until pending finals state action. That equates to approximately $311,000. And then the next three lines there, those are not new items, but we, again, went back and adjusted the estimated cost for those again. And then the final item that changed since last week is a recommendation to, again, place on hold the original plan to begin to restore five ITRT positions to meet SOQ requirements, again, pending final state action. I would imagine this would be one of the first items that would be restored to the extent that state funding would support it. And then in the next box of highlighted items, the reduced non-school-based operating budgets, we adjusted that amount to 727 in terms of the additional reduction. There are several items within that. I'll highlight for those, for board members, that includes a reduction in the benefits consulting services budget, a reduction in the reserve for equipment replacement. We have a very small, at the time, prior to this adjustment, it was $250,000. And that was to address things that may come up in the year that we didn't anticipate. As an example, the phone system at Ruffner went out earlier this year and that was a place we could go to, to address that $45,000 unanticipated cost. It doesn't necessarily qualify for CIP, but it is an ongoing as we have an aging telephone system. The next item of adjustment, or readjustment, if you will, we've adjusted several times, is the compensation base through turnover and attrition, again, just a small adjustment. I mentioned last week that we wouldn't adjust that again, but we had to go back and adjust it again. And then the, I think that highlights all of the adjustments from last week, but I will bring back to the board's attention within that 727,000 in non-school-based operating budget adjustment, in addition to the equipment replacement adjustment. It also includes a reduction in professional development costs that Dr. Corbin and her team have determined can be charged against Title II and that amounted to approximately $107,000. It also includes a cost savings resulting from the elimination of the behind-the-wheel driver's ed program. That is a fee-based program, but we also incur costs for part-time driver's ed instructors as well as the upkeep of the vehicles, vehicle fuel for those cars. So that is the one item that has a programmatic impact in that where we currently charge students a fee to take behind the wheel as a service provided by the school division. Under this recommendation, we would no longer provide that service for a fee. So in essence, kids, I believe the plan would be that they would go out and basically secure the services for behind the wheel on their own. Dr. Sevigny and her team can address programmatic implications of it.
The program, once we began looking at it and looking at the enrollment longitudinally, there were 429 students across the district who participated in the program last year and this year the projection is under 400. And as the costs continue to increase and enrollment continues to decrease, the return on investment was greatly out of proportion. And for this, it's not a traditional driver's ed program, it's a service that we provide to students and they get seven hours of driving of the 40 required for their driver's license. It is not the full-blown teach a child how to drive program, it is simply the opportunity for them to practice. And there are many vendors in the community, many of whom already work with families in the community, whose students will be able to take advantage of that. It just won't be offered as a service. And it is not a class now, it is something that students take either during a study hall or in the afternoons. It is not a class.
Would you also, in point, look back for the summer?
Yes.
There are summer opportunities also.
Right.
But this recommendation of a modification to this program, it really relates to what we do during first semester, second semester.
That is correct.
But there are some things that happen for these children during the summer that would still give them opportunities. So can you speak to that?
Sure. The program during the summer in terms of personnel cost is self-sustaining or self-funded. So assuming that students, the recommended or the required number of students sign up, then it will continue to be offered. We looked at those trends as well and over the years, that has also declined. To last summer, we offered two segments only and neither one of them actually filled up. But we will continue to provide that for students during the summer who have expressed that desire and that need.
That's how I anticipate, that body of students that typically captured through this discussion, that body that has chosen to take advantage of it during the school year, now will look at that option during the summer and would have that option to, so it doesn't totally take away the opportunity that driving readiness and preparedness will provide, but then it just moves it to the summer and limits it in that way.
Ray, I would just assume that those numbers in the summer would go up.
Yeah.
Because if you have fewer, you don't have the opportunity during the school year.
Right.
So I think that will fill that up. We'll see. Okay. Michael, is there anything else?
It also includes the, a reduction, an estimated reduction in the number of subscriptions or site licenses, whatever the most appropriate term is, related to my access and Achieve 3000, an estimated savings of approximately $145,000. And those would be...
Where do the world of sites come from?
Well, with the reconfiguration, Poplar Halls and PB Young will be pre-K2 sites and neither one of those programs is appropriate for that age range, so there's savings there. We also will not have to pay the site fees for either program at Lafayette Winona Middle School. And then based on input from a variety of individuals, our high school students and our high schools are not taking as advantage of the program to the degree that our elementary and our middle schools are, so we're pulling back from the high school component of that.
So those are the changes that have been made since last week that result in a balanced budget to the $317.6 million as appropriated by the city.
Okay. Just some comments?
Yes. And as the board prepares to enter into further questions and comments, I would also remind us as a governance leadership team and the administration that, of course, you heard Dr. Thornton mention that many of these items are placed on hold. What we hope and expect would be that after July 1st, that we will be able to go back based on priority, align with the strategic plan, and then replace some of these things that are on hold. And that will be done based on priority and communicating with the board as well. But for the purpose of where we are right now today, we think that this is our best recommendation at this point.
Thank you. Questions, comments in the board?
I think, go ahead.
I want to suggest that the driver's ed, since having a child just got a license.
I think part of it for my daughter and her example was more of a timing issue. I just don't know what the way the scheduling is done. And so just if you all do an opportunity to revisit that, I'm not sure how the, I don't know if it's the block scheduling or whatever it is, that the workload, caseload, whatever it is. But I know for a lot of students, that's what seemed to be the issue, is not that they didn't want to take it, it's just that however their scheduling was working, wouldn't allow them to take it for, I don't know what the cost was for us, but it would be good to know the difference in the price differential because I think it was a good program for, you know, for a lot of students that had that opportunity. So that's my comment on that. And then even though the numbers on the math and gifted in elementary positions only went up slightly, what was it that you all found that they kind of ticked those up $10,000 here and there?
Just look at what the individuals that are currently in the positions.
Oh, okay.
Went back, the original that, well, what you had last week wasn't, well, what you had the very first time was an estimate and was really just taking an average. And so what we went back, we went back and looked at the actual individuals who would be coming from those grants, from the grant and then into the operating budget, looked at their actual salary and benefits, try to get a more accurate estimate.
And so for right now, unless we get some benefit from the state, we're not going to do anything at all with open campus.
I'll make some opening statements and then I'll refer to Dr. Simmons in terms of the status. It is on hold with this particular budget. However, we're not resting idly by in terms of looking at options in reference to how we may potentially be able to begin the program with some outside funding sources as much as possible, even to the point that if it's not a full-scale rollout, maybe a modified rollout. But the issue for us now today is centering on funding and a committee has been formed to take a look at that and to look at the potential of what we can do outside of the budget until we know where we are. So, Dr. Simmons, do you have to comment?
Yes, as recently as today, I've been in, I've been having conversations with senators, congressmen and local officials, stakeholders, who have a keen interest in making sure that money is set aside from many different perspectives for this purpose. We do have a $50,000 grant from, I won't call it a grant, it was an award of $50,000 from the State Department of Education for development for this. So we have a development committee, United Way, among several other stakeholders that are going to come together collaboratively as soon as next week to talk about where we can find funding.
The last question on the positions that are SOQ-related, is there any, do we face any type of sanction or anything else if for some reason the money doesn't come through and we don't restore those positions?
I wouldn't say we're any more exposed than what we are.
By putting this on hold than where we were before we even contemplated trying to bring it back in. I know that what the practice has been recently with these ITRTs in a division that I was in, they'd call and say, okay, what are you all doing with your ITRTs because you're not fully funding staffing them? And, but they didn't do anything. They just said, what is your plan? Do you have a plan to begin to bring them back in?
Dr. Thornton and team, thank you all for looking at this again very diligently because clearly you've gone back and done a lot that we ask and I appreciate that, including looking at the programmatic opportunities through my access and Achieve 3000, as well as looking at just some programs. I'm sure the driver's ed, I'm sure for some will be disappointing, but there are community options and commercial options for that. And I just would reinforce too that it's, we all support open campus and so I wholly support your efforts in trying to move that forward with knowing that we don't have today the funding. But should the state funding come through, I would personally advocate that that's the first place that we put the funding towards in order to support that implementation. So, but again, I just wanted to thank the team for that. I think it's been a very good exercise in terms of where you thought you could find a little bit more room in the budget for others, so I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate your thoughtfulness and diligence.
Yes, Dr. Sevigny, you mentioned Achieve 3000 being underutilized. Is that correct?
In the high schools.
In the high schools. And so you've cut that Achieve 3000 there.
Yes, and by access.
And by access as well. Well, I think that was a good assessment, a good move to be able to look at that and cut that back because that was one of the concerns of the board as it concerns the vendors and how we were using them, that in the past, we have had these programs that have not always been utilized, but we continue to fund them. So I appreciate that you have looked at that.
And I'd also appreciate the team continuing to go back and taking a good hard look at this. I know these are tough decisions every year, they get tougher and it is certainly important that we protect the classroom and make these cuts as far within the classroom as we can. And no doubt in my mind that you have looked at this from every angle. Having said that, if there aren't any other questions or comments, we should be ready to vote. And so the summary is on the second page. Thank you. So I have a recommendation and you all have this third page here with the recommendation for the action for approval, that is recommended that the Northwood School Board approve the budget with previously discussed adjustments, the proposed operating budget as adopted by the school board on March 19th, 2014. And then we have what the revenue budgets, budget adjustments include. I won't read all of that to us. And with the total of all funds, of course, $372,219,125. Based on the recommendation, I would ask for a motion to adopt the budget as recommended and amended.
Senator?
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Dr. Houston?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Reverend Hayward?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Motion carries for this order. Thank you all very much. I'm sorry.
We just want to note, Dr. Houston, that there are two individuals who weren't here today for good reason not here.
Absolutely.
So we just don't want to note that they didn't vote, et cetera.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Not because it wouldn't be in support of the...
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Janelle said she had it documented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that it's noted that we maintain the 2% compensation increase for teachers and staff and we are absorbing the health insurance rate increase and the VRS increase too. So we are, we're looking out for our staff.
Absolutely. So noted, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to thank Ronnie Ewing, Rita Ellison, and members of the board team that have kind of been behind the scenes, working the numbers, doing the analysis and really providing the information that we could share with the team. I think Cabinet and Dr. King for his leadership to get us up to this point in the process and we'll see what happens with the state budget.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 3.02, transformation update. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Of course, it has become our practice to attempt to update the board as real time as possible around where we are with transformation, which has many, many phases to it. However, some of the items are really reflecting closer implementation going into the 2014-15 school year. So we'd like to give you a brief update in terms of where we are, kinds of conversations that have taken place throughout the community and what that means going forward. I would just draw attention to the rationale from our standpoint in terms of transformation. Of course, you've heard this before, but our interest is to be keenly focused on not just closing achievement gaps, but beginning to position ourselves to move toward the elimination of achievement gaps across all student subgroups in all areas. And of course, that's regardless of any socioeconomic changes and that's, the whole philosophy services throughout our strategic plan. And I think that one gauge of how well we perform our duties, we center on whether we are getting the movement that we need for that. And the notion is to, of course, as we always say, allow our children to be college and career-ready. With that said, I would ask Dr. Sevigny to begin to talk about public engagement and we will move from there with some information from executive directors as well as Dr. Simmons from operations and some her designees throughout the process, but we will be brief, as brief as possible. Dr. Sevigny?
Thank you, Dr. King. Would you please go first, please?
Sure.
Okay. Good afternoon. Just wanted to quickly give you some information in regard to where we are with public engagement. We are on the tail end of completing a round of surveys with parents from PB Young, Tidewater Fairlong and Poplar Halls, getting their specific input, thank you, in regard to the issues that have presented themselves during the previous parent conversations around uniforms and start and stop times before and after school care. So we will have those survey results soon and we'll be able to share those. Mr. Kleinbell and his team are working very diligently to pre-identify bus stops so that we'll be able to share those in the very immediate future with families in these communities so they have some input as well. And you are aware that we are moving through the PPA community conversations and those are continuing and will continue for several weeks moving into the future. And we are meeting with Mr. Ballard and his team, Dr. Simmons and Mr. Dayen on Friday to go back and look at some of that community input to see if anything needs to be changed in regard to the plans. So we're rocking and rolling and moving quickly. Dr. Malisi?
Okay, and again, as we told you last time, we began meeting with teachers from the four schools. We continue with our teacher think tanks. We're getting teacher input, everything from program implementation to moving details to how many boxes they need and it is so far running very smoothly and they are, again, very, very happy to have an opportunity to give input.
From the collaboration perspective, we have spent a lot of time planning in all hands-on deck meetings to make sure we've got the materials, the bubble wrap and everything we need in place for packing and began so that we have a smooth transition. We have moving dates established. And from an instructional supplies, material, equipment and furniture perspective, technology will not move as far as the transformation is concerned, but we certainly have made sure that there are no gaps with regard to the technology that students have had at their previous school. So we've taken care of all of that and we will be transferring mobiles as needed to make sure that all children have adequate space for learning.
And our instructional coordinators have been very involved in the planning of the movement of materials, so they have been working hand-in-hand with the procurement and purchasing office to make sure that there are no gaps in details. So there are numerous lists and plans and flow charts in regard to who's moving what, when and where and how. Okay? And then... Then, Mr. Gay, Ms. Sikora?
So, Mr. Gay will give us an update regarding the mobiles and just what the relocation.
So, what do we want to know other than the cost?
The cost is good.
All right. The total relocation and purchase is going to cost us three hundred and eighteen thousand. And I think Andrea's cost is not included in that for technology, which is going to be about...
It's about ten thousand dollars per mobile unit. And that would be based on, as it says up on the screen, four student computers, a teacher computer and a smartboard installation set up for each of the mobiles, assuming we would be using them in that cost.
Ten thousand per mobile?
I'm sorry?
Ten thousand per mobile?
Per mobile.
I would like to add that Mr. Gay and his team do a fantastic job making sure even though they are used, slightly, slightly used mobiles, they will look new once he puts them in place. It would be a very good learning environment.
And then there's, there's one thing we need to note too is that we've also included cost in here for cover walkways from these particular units. But the other thing that we've got to remember is that we're taking some mobiles to some schools that already have mobiles. We didn't put a cost in for the mobiles that are existing. Now, cover walkways is going to raise the price quite a bit, but it is optional and it's there. We just need to decide which way we want to go with it.
We can continue to assess and review that.
Okay.
And then our professional learning that we have planned...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ronnie, question?
On the mobile piece, are we losing, are we going to take mobiles away at Tidewater? Can you just explain? I know that Fairlong, we had the 10 and so doing the configuration, bringing children, bringing mobiles potentially over to Poplar Halls, but at Tidewater, where we currently have mobiles and doing the configuration and the, I guess you all proceeding down the path of adding four units to PB Young.
Right.
Are we losing mobiles then at Tidewater?
We won't lose any at Tidewater. We're going to relocate four to PB Young, two to Poplar Halls. We'll have one at Camp Estella, which is the JJ Roberts, and two at Larchmont.
So, currently at Tidewater, they have the pre-K to two-year-olds out in the portables? Who's in the portables now at Tidewater? I thought those were like fifth grade and older students.
I think it's the older students outside.
But we're bringing, aren't we, what's that?
No, they're the older.
But we're, no, I just meant in that age range, but we're bringing, I guess I'm still trying to figure out why do we, what's the count that's causing the portables at PB Young? If the, can you just explain, is it just a difference in the total size of the schools?
If I give you that answer, then I would take that from Dr. Savigny. I wouldn't want to, you know, ruin that for her.
You are so kind. We are, between PB Young and Tidewater, there will be six pre-K classes. And when you add those together, when she had the existing classrooms, it put her at needing thirty-one classrooms next year. So, which exceeds the number that she currently has, which is the need for the additional or the transfer of the mobile units.
Mr. Gay?
Did that answer your question in terms of numbers?
Yeah. Step, but go ahead.
I thought you were asking about the numbers at Tidewater.
What, if I understand you're saying...
Keeping the mobile, the module is there. Isn't that what you asked?
Right, because you're saying that because of the number of pre-K classes they have at Tidewater that are coming over to Young is increasing the total number of pre-K at Young.
Increasing the total number of classrooms needed at PB Young.
Right, because of the increase in pre-K.
Right.
And the plans to put the pre-K inside the building.
Correct.
Which is then going to push older students, at least second graders, I guess. Is that what's being...
Or that will be principal's discretion or the program art or music or something of that nature.
So, but then on the Tidewater side, what...
They will have, she currently has nineteen classrooms, including the use of those four mobiles. And next year, she will have nineteen classrooms, including the use of those mobiles because of the sizes of the third, fourth, and fifth grade classes that are moving over. Now, I'm looking at Dr. Williford. Did I explain that correctly?
Yes, you did. And the fact that the schools are different size, different number of classrooms in the school make, one school may need more mobiles than the other, but not the same number of classrooms in each school, different sized classrooms. So, what you said was correct, it's just different sizes.
And then, you know, personally, I would prefer there be no portable, but why is it that then the portables that are being projected for PB Young are the used portables and the portables being projected for other locations are the new portables?
It really, you know, it's, it's not that, let me tell you what initially happened. The first thing we had to try to do is take care of the parent situation for the grades. And then, we talked later on, probably a month after that...
You mean the parent center?
No, pairing, I'm sorry.
Oh, the pairing, oh, okay.
For class, class level, grade level. Maybe a month or so after that, we talked about additional mobiles at Larchmont and Camp Estella. So, initially, we spotted the mobiles that we had at Fairlong and we decided, all right, we found five of them that we can relocate. Some of them, if we try to move them, they're going to break down. So, those are not going anywhere. That necessitated the purchase of some new mobiles. We found one used mobile that we can buy for about fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The new mobiles are going to cost us about forty-two thousand apiece. And so, we had already decided that we're going to take these units at Fairlong and put them at Poplar Halls and PB Young. And so, the next thing to do was when we had a request for more mobiles is to say, all right, well, we got about two. So, what we have decided to do was take one new one and put it at Larchmont and one new one and put it at Poplar Halls. I mean, so there's no real rhyme or reason for where they go. When we finish with them, all of them going to look the same.
Yeah.
And I think if you look at your report, you know, there's a cost center in there for repair and modification. So, whatever we do to mobiles when we relocate them, we make sure that they look like they're brand new when they, when they open up for the first day of school. And if you would have seen the ones that we did at Camp Estella this year, that's how they looked.
And to add to that, it was my request that with any of the movement and transition that we do it with balance and equity in mind, even with whether we are dealing with used, new or mildly used, that, all those things taken into consideration. And so, we looked at the schools that were going to have movement. We looked at how many new modular units we were going to have. We made the attempt to ensure that it was equitably done. And so, hopefully, that's what you're going to see in the net effect of what's there. One school is not receiving X number of new units over and beyond another school and that we're, for the most part, equally distributing those. And as Mr. Gay said, there's work that's done from his department on even the used ones to bring them up to high quality, like what we, like what we would like to see across the divisions.
I have a question for that. In terms of those mobiles, Mr. Gay, in comparison to the regular classroom, these mobiles are, you know, I've not been in these mobiles. Are they, the space in these mobiles and the equipment and the things that we see in the mobiles would be comparable to what you would see in the regular building classroom?
Yes. Most of our mobiles are about eight hundred and sixty-four square feet and that's about the same size as every classroom.
Okay. So, you're really not going to see a great difference between what you see in the classroom and what you see in the mobiles?
No. And then if it's for your lower grades, if they require cupboards, I mean, we go in and build those. If it requires counter space, cabinets, we put those in as well.
Okay.
I mean, so if you walk in there and don't change your mind, you'd just be in a classroom.
It's also, for right now, we don't have anything for PB Young or Tidewater in terms of significant renovation or new construction at the school. So, potentially, we could be talking about those portables in that configuration being there for significant amounts of time.
Oh, it could be forever, just like the annexes on most of our schools. They were temporary buildings when they put them there. Before you and I were born, they're still there. They were temporary. So, I mean, until you have to relocate mobiles, they could always be. If you look at a situation like we had at Lafayette, we built a school brand new and put nine mobiles there and now there are none there. So, I mean, it just depends on where the need is. We have to relocate them, we just relocate them.
And the portables that you were referring to earlier, you mean the portables that are behind the Camp Estella that's now, that used to be Dream Keepers? Or you're talking about the portables that are over at Fair...
That's right. They used to be Dream Keepers.
Those are the high standard portables?
Those are the ones that we, see, initially, when we left JJ Roberts or Dream Keepers.
Right.
We moved those mobiles when we closed the school. And then, of course, when we knew we had to open back up for Camp Estella, then we had to bring some mobiles back. And so, when we brought them in, they were mobiles that had come from another school, other locations. And what we did is went in and put new floors in them. We painted them all. If it required carpet and tile, we put that in. And so, when we started the first day of school, they looked brand new. And so, we'll make sure we do the same thing with any mobiles that we relocate this summer. And we hope to get this started probably about a day after the last day of school.
Dr. Savigny, you mentioned that you were, the division is doing the parent surveys at these meetings and I've not been able to be at these meetings. And so, will these surveys, are they, are you collecting these surveys to identify where the problems will be? Will they be published? How, what are you going to do with these surveys?
Yes, they will be published and we decided as a team, and when I say the team, I mean the big district collaboration team in regard to transformation, that because we heard some common questions between the first round of parent, community conversations that we hosted in regard to the reconfiguration, that we needed to offer parents the opportunity for some additional input. And there were three or four areas that parents seemed to have the most questions. One was around the issue of uniforms. When schools that were being paired, one had uniforms and the other didn't. One question that came up was around stagger times when the two schools being paired had different staggers. And one set of parents were adamant that it be their stagger and the other set of parents were adamant that it be their stagger. So, giving folks input into those types of decisions because those are very important decisions, but we did have a little bit of time where we could get, where we thought we needed to have as much community input as possible. So, as soon as that survey has closed in, if it hasn't closed today, it will be closing in the very immediate future and we will, of course... Did it close already? Will, will be. Okay. And then we, of course, will share those results with you.
And those, those results will be shared back to the parents?
Most definitely, yes. Because we need to schedule another round as soon as the bus stop identification has been finalized. So, we'll be going back to schools to share that information again for parents.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the last little piece is just professional learning, just to draw your attention back to, there's still much training that's ongoing and will continue throughout the summer that's very specific to the transformation and improving the quality of learning across the board. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'm sorry, the three, teaching and learning. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Teaching and learning will consist of new textbooks adoption along with an update on where we are with SOL testing administration. Dr. Bailey and Dr. Savigny and any other team members.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Because I know that we have a lot of information we want to share with you and time is precious this afternoon, I will refrain from my introductory comments and pass the torch directly to Dr. Bailey and her assistant this afternoon and I'll let her introduce.
Yes, I know, normally we call D dot one and D dot two, but good evening, Dr. Houston and Dr. King, members of the board. With me today is Ms. T. Nguyen and she primarily handles all of our state mandated assessments for our division. We have, we talked with you several weeks ago prior to the beginning of SOL testing and now we're in our fourth week of testing. As you know, SOLs are used by the state to evaluate student achievement and you've seen this slide before, but we always want to have it there when we talk about our SOL and standards of learning. The cycle of SOL testing certainly starts in July and we have our summer school testing, followed by our fall testing and winter testing, and then our spring testing is where the bulk of our testing occurs. Now, I'm not sure how many of you can identify this, but you know, almost ten years ago, you know, as it relates to testing, it used to be paper pencil. A lot of paper used to come into central admin and then shifted out to the schools and back. And then accountability also increased around that same time period. It's a lot of paper. And so, while my office didn't totally look like this, you know, I guarantee you I could find anything that I needed. So, just a quick cap of our current administration. We have, as of Friday of last week, we have administered sixty-five thousand and two hundred tests. All of our assessments have been online, including our writing assessments. Each of our assessments has approximately fifteen percent of technology enhanced items and that runs from six to nine for assessment tests of forty to sixty items. We have alternate assessments where it requires us to collect information, starting in September, October. We collect it up in April. We also score it locally, which is something that the state has shifted back to local districts. And now, I'll just turn it over to Ms. T. Nguyen. Oops. Anyone have to help me, Janice? Let me start it. Okay, there we go.
So, we just wanted to have the opportunity to go over just our testing protocol that we have throughout the school year to prepare our schools, to implement the testing programs at the local level as well as your state mandated assessment programs. So, our most important folks in the building are your school test coordinators. We also have administrators or assistant principals assigned to testing to oversee the whole testing program that it is being administered and with integrity and fidelity. So, with that, in order to support those folks, we have monthly test coordinator meetings where we go over the DOE updates as well as any other updates that are coming through at the state level and even at the federal level. And then about quarterly, we meet with the test chairs and we have what's called work sessions. Those are opportunities for those school test coordinators as well as assistant principals to get more in-depth information as it relates to any policy at the DOE level or at the federal level. With the assistant principals or other administrators involved with testing, they give really good oversight at the school level if there are any questions or concerns that come up. But on top of that, we also do a number of data quality or quality control reports to ensure that our data is at a high level. We also conduct paperwork check-in at the end of each administration. There is paperwork that's required of all of our schools, again, just showing that the... Again, just showing that, um, the testing program was administered the way that, at per guidelines from the D O E and for, you know, for public schools. Uh, right now, we're in the process of just, again, trying to close out for the spring non-writing administration, making sure our schools are, um, accounting for all students, checking for student test alerts and things of that nature, so we can go out and close out. And reviewing our testing regularities, anything that's related to that, so that we can start planning professional development and training opportunities for our schools for the upcoming school year. And in con- in conjunction with all that, um, we do want to recognize the collaborative efforts with other departments such as curriculum and instruction and network services, um, their assistance with our team, um, to make sure that all areas are covered. So, we want to thank them for their help this year. So, some of the things that, um, questions have come up, uh, here recently with the weather, the inclement weather, the snowstorms and whatnot, and then just a couple of weeks ago, we had some heavy rains that caused a little bit of havoc in our streets. So, we wanted to just, um, go over some of what we do in the office to make sure that everybody is, um, taken care of. One of the things that we like to do is we want to make sure that there's a needs assessment that's done right away. You know, what schools are being impacted, how many students are scheduled to test that day, where are we, uh, when that weather is not looking so great? So, as soon as we get some information there, we contact network services. Sometimes we'll also tap, um, Mr. Gay's group to see if there are any power issues. And after we gather that information, we, um, give directives to the schools, um, working in conjunction with the administrators, assistant principals and school test coordinators, so that they can implement Plan B for their building. So, we listed some things there for your, um, things that we've encountered this year. Of course, the weather with the heavy rain and flooding. Uh, luckily, knock on wood, we have not had any internet provider issues with Cox Cable, no lines were cut there. We do have occasional fire alarms that are pulled, but those were handled very well by school test coordinators. Um, no bomb threats this year are locked down. And we did have some issues with, um, air conditioning units being a little bit warmer than normal, but that was taken care of very quickly. And again, our school test coordinators and assistant principals are very quick to act, um, to relocate their students to areas in the building so that they can continue testing under more conducive, uh, temperatures.
So, I just want to just to reiterate that, you know, it is a collaborative effort in working with operations, as well as facilities and network engineers, certainly when something like that happens, we all need to come together before a decision is made, so that we know what's going to be impacted when, uh, when we close a school. Moving on into the accreditation, um, currently at this time, we have completed about ninety-two percent of our testing. And, um, at this time, we are providing expedited retesting for our students, which will, um, end June eleventh. And, um, I wanted to also share with you a little bit about the accreditation. As you can see, we have English, reading, writing, math, history and science, that are major components into calculating accreditation. And then our graduation completion index is also a part of the accreditation status for our high schools. What we have here are the adjusted benchmarks. And what I just, I'm sorry, clicked through, I got a quick finger here. Um, these are our benchmarks for accreditation. They are quite different for our annual measurable objectives, formerly A Y P. And so, but, most people really understand the accreditation, um, the benchmarks are quite different. Last year, the benchmark for grade three, history and science, went up to seventy percent, so this is our second year of that. Um, also, last year, for English, for grades six through eight and nine through twelve, or grade eleven, the benchmark increased to seventy-five percent. So, this is our second year of that. The various accreditation levels that you have, certainly we understand what it means to be fully accredited, but our high schools can be provisionally accredited if they met all of the four content benchmarks, but not the graduation completion index. Accreditation with warning is awarded to any school that has not met the benchmark in any one of the content areas. Conditional accreditation can be applied to any school that is, uh, awarded the status of accreditation denied. And that, in a way that a school gets that, is if they have shown progress from one year to the next, then it can apply an appeal for the accreditation denied status. The impact of receiving any one of the accreditation levels, uh, most importantly, it requires that you conduct an academic review, and then also that you, um, each school has to create their school improvement plans. And most of their plans are really tied right into the strategic plan. Taking it one step further, what's included in the calculation? For elementary, we have grade three, grade four, grade five for reading, math, and then grade three and five for history and science. Also included are alternate assessments, which could be their V A D G L A or V math. And then, that's the last part of the calculation are the adjustments that are made for recovery and transfer students. For our middle schools, it's very similar. The addition would be the end of course, subjects added in, along with their opportunities to retest, um, and providing a different, uh, hopefully providing a passing score for their failing score. Now, for our high schools, it's quite complex, I'm sorry, I got a tricky finger. But, um, it's quite complex, and so, because our high schools test starting in the summer, that's when the, uh, collection of data starts for our high school. Then it collects also in the winter, the fall and the spring. And all of their subjects are end of course, and then they have a first time for testing, they also have opportunities to retest. Expedited retesting and adjustments are also, um, applied to their scores. Whoops, there we go.
I'm curious about this slide, I was wondering what, um, recovery and transfer points.
Okay, so hopefully this will help clear that up. As I tried to, um, come up with, um, illustration that is not too complex, and so, I selected, um, English for elementary. So, we have the three grade levels where we have the number passed, the number failed, total tested, and then the percent passing. We also have included grade five writing. And so, the first thing that is added are recovery points. Recovery points are any individual who may have failed the previous year's S O L subject test, and then they pass the current year's test. And so, a point is added in the numerator and the denominator. It used to be quite different years ago, but this is where we are now with the adjustment for accreditation. Also, another adjustment are the transfer students who test. There's several criterias for this, but students who transfer after the twentieth day of instruction. If they failed the test, then their record is excluded from the calculation. It's counted for the district, but it's excluded for the school. And so, those are two adjustments that are made when calculating accreditation. So, you can see that, um, when they provide the results, there's the current year, which is year one, then pass rates, and then there's the three-year average. And so, if the school does not meet any one of the benchmarks in a subject area for year one, then they look at the three-year average to see if they have made it for the three-year average against the benchmark. And if they have, then they are, then they can count that as meeting that part of the accreditation. So, I just want to pause real quick to see if there are any questions related to that.
To this particular thing or anything you've gone over thus far?
I'm sorry.
To this particular item or anything you've gone over thus far?
Anything I've gone over.
I mean, I can waste if you, I wouldn't.
Okay, well, we're almost to the end. And so, recovery is only for English and math? Okay, English reading and not writing, and then math. So, looking ahead. We have created a brief timeline for reports for you, um, certainly as Ms. T. Nguyen mentioned. Once all testing has taken place, then we ask our schools to account for all students. Uh, we also look at attendance, just to see, make sure that, um, all students have, that who attended during the time period had an opportunity to test. And then, we also resolve any testing irregularities or alerts that we have as they process our data. And then, eventually, sometime in the middle of July, third, third week in July, we will then close out our database, and that's when all of the accountability type reports will be processed. And so, that does conclude our presentation, and so, we are open for questions.
On the expedited retake, can you explain that, the process again? Expedited retake, what triggers that?
What triggers that? Okay, I'm going to let Ms. Nguyen respond to that.
Um, expedited retake opportunities are only for end of course, so say, Algebra one or Science, Biology. Um, what, the D O E, they have a range for students. If they score or were unsuccessful on their S O L test, scored between a three seventy-five and three ninety-nine, they're afforded what's called an expedited retake opportunity, and they can take that up into our, the end of our testing window. A few years ago, when new standards started coming out, we did, um, ask the state to adjust, give a gradual adjustment to that. So, for this year, it'll be the last year for Science and Math, that the range for those, um, students to have an opportunity to expedite or retake is a score of three seventy to three ninety-nine. After this year, everybody else will go back to the three seventy-seven, three ninety-nine range. Uh, that just gives them another opportunity, um, expedited retake for end of course, because it's tied to verified credit for graduation, that's why they offer that, the state allows for that.
So, are we seeing, uh, more of those this year and last year, are we seeing large numbers of them or small numbers of them?
Normally, um, as new, um, standards are added for us to be assessed against, normally you will see a lot more students that, uh, may need a second opportunity to pass the test.
So, we are seeing some increases from, from last year?
We saw some last year from the previous year, and so, we're seeing some this year. We have not looked at comparison, but I don't think it is as many as we had retesting last year, because we had the three subject areas that were new. And so, um, this year is the second year of that, and so, um, however, we do, we are providing that second, third, fourth opportunity, because we also have students who are looking to graduate and be successful in passing these tests. And so, there is a requirement also, that they have, uh, a certain amount of remediation to take place prior to retaking the test.
I'd like to know whether the alternative assessments, um, whether there is a trending up from last year. What, what do, what do we look like, are, are we seeing more students, um, falling into that category for testing, or are we?
I think, um, with respect to our V A D students, we have seen relatively the same amount every year. We're running about, do you know?
About three hundred, a little over three hundred students for a total of nine hundred content area success for our V A D students. And that's usually where we are for that, uh, V G L A is not as many as our V A D.
Same thing, just?
Well, G, V G L A has died down, um, the state has reduced the opportunity to use V G L A in its primary use for our English language learners.
So, the other question I had was concerning these, uh, graduation reports, I was just wondering what the, um, acronyms here for F G I, what, what does that stand for?
Right, that stands for the Federal Graduation Indicator. Uh, the very first one, G C I, is Graduation Completion Index.
Yes.
And that's a part of accreditation. Um, the second one, F G I, Federal Graduation Indicator, and that is a part of the Federal Annual Measurable Objective Report, which is the federal accountability system. And then, the last one is the Virginia On Time Grade Level Graduation Rate, I'm sorry, that they calculate as well. Um, and they feel like that provides a true picture of the graduation rate.
So, with the, um, G C I, um, that's a formula that, does that, that on-time graduation rate, um, is that incorporated in as part of that formula for graduation rate index here?
It's, it's very similar, um, the G C I and the Virginia On Time are very similar, and where they look at a micro cohort that, um, completes the requirements for graduation four years later, five years later, six years later. And so, there are some adjustments, and it's very similar. Um, the difference between the G C I and F G I are the, um, the federal graduation only includes your advanced and standard diplomas, whereas the other two include all of our diplomas.
And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased to see the hard work that the graduation coaches have been putting into, uh, the schools and have gone by and, and seen that operation. I think it's going to make a big difference in terms of the success that we will see in the graduation rates in our high schools.
One more, uh, just in terms of your timeline, there was a, uh, high school in Roanoke that, uh, at their graduation, somewhere nearby, the principal announced, uh, that they had done so well on their, uh, S O L scores, that they figured that they would no longer fall into the, uh, potential for the O E I category. So, 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 is there some way in that timeline, even on an informal basis, we'll have some sense of, uh, how schools may be doing, even if it's not, I know we have the preliminary for August. But is there some other way of getting some sense of how, either at an individual student level or at a school level, we would be able to have some sense of how we're doing even before we get to the, the August timeframe?
Well, as soon as we, um, certainly finish testing and, you know, and then we run through our quality control routines, then we will start crunching our data and looking at it, and, um, looking at it in various ways, certainly in disaggregating and looking at it by our subgroups, which primarily impact our, our schools that, um, may be subjected to far more of a focus status.
And will you also be able to, or maybe I'll ask it another way, at what point do you think you'll be able to look at, those preliminary scores against the, uh, C F A and benchmark scores and see if there's any correlation between what we were seeing with those scores and what we're seeing with our S O L scores?
Right, that is a part of our, um, task for the summer, is to work, uh, very closely with our curriculum and instruction, um, staff to look at that, to see, um, how well our C F As may have predicted performance that we see. And, um, and also looking at, uh, triangulation of other applications, um, that may assess reading or math to see if they have also predicted that same level of performance. So, uh, yes, we have a lot of work ahead of us this summer.
All right, one more, and then, and with that, uh, with the professional development that we're going to be doing over the summer, is, does that factor into that at all, or is it pretty much what you've already have identified based upon what you've already assessed? Or do you see any window of opportunity based upon what you're hearing now, that that may have some impact on professional development for the summer?
Well, we, we, based on the needs assessment lean from the Common Formative Assessments or the benchmarks, we, we had a pretty good inkling of what we needed to do, and there's two additional days that you allowed us to add to the calendar. We'll focus specifically on those issues that arose, uh, and Dr. Corbin and, uh, the curriculum instruction coordinators are already working themselves around the clock to have that very strategically set up, so teachers have menus and options to select from.
Thank you very much. Item, uh, three point oh five, uh, I'm sorry, oh, four, School Leadership Development, Dr. King.
Kevin Houston, members of the board, School Leadership Development. Uh, will consist of focusing priority school updates to be presented by executive directors.
I'm sorry, we had one other item on teaching and learning, the textbook adoption.
I was going to ask you to circle back to us, but we didn't have too, too much time, and you were going to focus.
No, actually, we can go ahead with that.
Okay.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. King, members of the board. As you already know, the commercial is covered. As you know, our work is governed not only by Virginia Code, but also by policy. And as a part of that policy, we have a textbook adoption committee that works feverishly throughout the year that involves central office staff, as well as building administrators and teachers. Our textbook allocation is set based on a standards of quali, a standards of quality formula, where we received a pot of funds, and those funds are allocated here at the local level in terms of portions set aside for the new adoption, as well as for current maintenance. If you look on our fourth slide, we have a breakdown of funding that we had available to us for the fiscal year fourteen, as well as what is projected to be available for us in fiscal year fifteen. As you'll notice, there are funds that are listed as being remaining for our existing textbook adoption and new textbook adoption. I'm gonna explain how this all comes together throughout this presentation, hopefully. If you'll notice on our very next slide, we began with a timeline of how the actual textbook adoption process works. It actually is a year-long process. In October and November, and I'm not gonna go through every single one of the months, but if you'll notice in the very beginning, we have our coordinators work together to convene a committee of those folks that I mentioned to you earlier. They come up with a criterion of what we're going to look for in terms of a valid and reliable textbook. So they come together, they come up with that criteria, and then throughout the year, they have a process that first involves having samples of textbooks sent to the schools. Eventually, those books are reviewed by members of the staff, as well as parents who are invited to come into the schools, and their, the textbooks, the sample textbooks are actually placed either in a media center or sometimes in an auditorium, so that they are accessible. Members of that staff, as well as administrators and parents, can come and they review the books, looking based on that criteria that this committee originally set. They evaluate, they leave their feedback, and that information is then tallied. After that phase of the adoption is completed, we then have to place those items on, excuse me, on a public library for a public display for our community members to also give feedback. And again, there's a set period of time that they have to have those textbooks out for community review, and it's typically thirty days. It can be swayed just a little bit here and there, depending upon weather and other things, but we can typically count on having a thirty-day review period for the public. Once the public has reviewed, again, that committee comes back together and tallies those results. Then the vendors, once, excuse me, once the committee comes together and tallies results, they narrow the field, because originally, when you first put it out for, for, you put it out there with the vendors to let them know that we're doing an adoption, you may have anywhere from ten to fifteen different publishing companies sending in samples of textbooks, and we have to by law let everyone have an opportunity to be viewed. Once the community and the staff have all had an opportunity to review the textbooks, we narrow the field down to approximately three. From there, those three vendors are invited in to make presentations to the committee. And once they make presentations to the committee, and other folks outside of the committee can also come, but the, the committee has to be present. Once they then make their final selection based on that, excuse me, that vendor presentation, they'll make a recommendation, which is shared, of course, with Dr. King, and then eventually it comes before the board, and we make a final selection with your approval. And purchasing begins to work out all of the logistics of negotiating our price and all that kind of good stuff for us. So, from there, we start to get our textbooks ordered, get them in, and training begins throughout the summer on those textbooks. And it begins in typically late July, August, and carries through September, so that all the faculty have had an opportunity to be trained. And once they have their initial training, then it's just an ongoing process of following up with the training throughout the school year. Again, that's it, a quick and down and dirty version of it. But if you look right now, where we are in terms of the textbook adoption, last year, you know, you approved for us to adopt K five Science and grades K three Elementary English and Language Arts. Those textbooks came in late, they came in in July. They were delivered to schools, and the training did commence, as we detailed on the previous slide. We are fine with those for this school year. Approximately June, May, our purchasing department started going through and getting the second round, which would be for our secondary science, because you actually did approve for those last year, but the funding was not available at the time. And one thing we do make sure is that we don't order textbooks mid-year. We order them at a specific time range, because you can't stop instruction using one set of materials mid-year and rolling a new set. So our purchasing department right now is in the process of securing our elementary science and the remainder of our, excuse me, secondary science and the rest of our elementary English Language Arts. What we hope to do, and we were trying very, very diligently to get this done for you, is to have our secondary English Language Arts adoption ready for this work session. Unfortunately, this year we've had, as you know, a lot of delays because of weather, which then pushed us into testing. And as it turns out right now, our vendors are coming to do what should have happened last month, but again, because of other factors, had to be pushed back. Our vendors will be coming in tomorrow to do their presentation, and I could not bring forth a final recommendation to you until they have that, that opportunity. So our plan is to bring that to you at our next work session, so that we can have our English Language Arts adopted for the secondary courses, for grade six through end of course. And in the fall, we will begin that same adoption cycle again, only this time we'll be focusing on mathematics and foreign language and some of our resources. And that is the adoption process.
Okay, so originally, we wanted action for today, no action for today.
Correct.
The process has been completed for this textbook?
We'll shorten one portion of it, which is the vendors coming in for the secondary English that will take place tomorrow. And by the thirteenth, I will be able to tell you, but we, our board meeting is actually on the eleventh.
Correct.
So I'll bring it to you at our next work session, if that's agreeable.
In general, what is our approach to e-textbook evaluation and utilization implementation?
Any textbooks that we purchase now must have an online component to it. We still do, but we purchase class sets of books. Instead of having a one-to-one hard copy book for everyone, we try to make sure that we have, not try, we ensure that all of our textbooks are available electronically. And we do have some devices in hand already for some of our students.
And are any of those textbooks, e-textbooks, e-textbooks interactive? Where if it's a workbook, I can interact on my computer, on my tablet, and do work in the textbook, and it's unique to Courtney Doyle?
Off the top of my head, I don't wanna say yes or no. I, I don't believe so, but with some of our math textbooks that are coming along, I believe that's gonna be something that we see in our next adoption for mathematics. But with the current books that we have, I don't believe so, but I, I don't wanna wing it and say yes or no.
And do we kinda have a plan, as a division, as to where we wanna go in terms of e-textbook adoption implementation that still allows the students to learn based on the curriculum required by the State Department of Education?
And what we rolled out last year with the new adoption was, instead of doing the one-to-one, where every child had the big conquer textbook, we could tote it around with him as the class sets, as Dr. Corbin said, and making sure that there is an online component or an electronic component to that, so students utilize the traditional textbook during the classroom. And then for after hours, they have the ebook option, or they can put a DVD or a CD into their computer at home, or they can go to an online web space and work. And then we did provide in some of our schools some Kindle-type devices, so that students that did not have access to that at home could still utilize a Kindle to access the textbooks.
And this might be a question unanswerable, but what is the vision in terms of long-term? How long will we continue to have hardback books in our classrooms? I mean, what do you think the end game is?
Until, oh, thank you.
That wasn't a trick question either. I just am very curious, because some schools have gone all E, and I'm just curious.
Ultimately, we want to move away from textbooks. However, there are major steps that must be taken in reference to readiness to be able to do so. One item that we have to consider would be what I would refer to as connectivity at home.
Right.
And to build the readiness to the point that our students can connect. The other item would be our infrastructure needs, because we need to bring our buildings up to speed in terms of being able to use e-technology, excuse me, in lieu of a textbook. So there's a time factor for that, and within the technology plan that's being rolled out and built in an ongoing basis for the next five years going forward. Those items are being included in that process, in addition to the bring your own device, which also dovetails with this. So, I can't, I will not be able to give you a number of years right now, today, in terms of what we anticipate, but soon we will be able to, because we're gonna have to make those steps. And it ultimately is going to be more cost-effective to even go to ebooks, because the information is changing daily. And as that happens, you know, you, you change your textbooks, and you adopt new textbooks, and that runs you into the millions over a period of time. Whereas when you adopt your ebooks, then you can have an automatic updating of information to align with the expectations of SOL. So soon we will have a range in collaboration with operations through technology, as well as teaching and learning in terms of the amount of time and steps that we think we're gonna have to have, and a cost over time, to move in that direction. And as you heard stated earlier, right now, we have made some major steps in that we have class sets, and we are connected as appropriate for children that can take advantage of it. But we still have students who do not have access at home. Therefore, they need to take a textbook home with them for support.
Thank you.
I just wanna say from my professional perspective, assuming we're in that, we see an increase in the number of spinal injuries with children carrying book bags. My kids had the problem, they were only supposed to carry about fifteen percent of your body weight in a book bag. And we know that that's three, four, five, sometimes six times that amount. So it's, the sooner we can get to that, the better it is for the health of our children.
Well, I marvel at the books I don't see. I'm looking at kids going to school, and my granddaughter gets tired of me asking her every day, "Why don't they have any books?" She says, "I don't have any of them." So I was wondering what they were working out of. They're certainly not taking them home. Anyway, nobody asked me. Any other comments or questions on the textbook? Thank you very much. Okay, school leadership.
Good afternoon, Dr. King, Dr. Houston, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
We're gonna be very brief this afternoon, but we want to be thorough in terms of updating you on our, our efforts to improve our schools, specifically our priority and focus schools. We're in the midst of ending the school year, as well as transitioning with assignments in terms of our own department. And so we have our team here to, to share any updates or any questions that you may have in reference to the updates that you've received. Specifically, we're, we're conducting end-of-the-year meetings, SGT meetings, this week with each priority school, where the state is visiting us to review the exit criteria for priority and focus. Those priority school meetings will be conducted this week, and then we'll finish next week with our focus school meeting as well. We're also collaborating with our lead turnaround partners. This year for Cohort Four has been a pre-implementation year in terms of those lead turnaround partners. Others have been with us, and we're exploring our, our plans and our summer professional learning opportunities in conjunction with our division coordinators as well. One of the things that we will have to do in terms of exiting priority or focus is to review, update, and submit all those improvement plans and reports, end-of-the-year reports. And so that's, that's a major, I call that kind of a cleaning up data. Also, making sure that all of the reports are included. And so there's a process there. If you, I'm not sure if you see it when you view, in the star, but we can see where reports were submitted, if they need to be reviewed, and then resubmitted. And so that's part of it. The principals have been submitting reports all year long, and so this is just kind of, kind of routine. But again, as, although it's routine, we've seen some things that we need to clean up to make sure that those reports are exactly what's needed to be turned in to the state. And then lastly, we've received dates for some, there are some new, and I won't call it necessarily new, but new to me, and might be new to our principals, but looking at those presentations for those priority schools, we've got some dates for, for that, those presentations to happen, as well as a monitoring visit in terms of the school improvement process that we've, the school improvement grant process that we shared with you in previous presentations. There, there is a process to obtaining those school improvement grants. And so we will have a monitoring visit for two of our cohort, two schools in, in August. So we're, we'll be preparing for that this summer as well. Last but not least, we wanted to share, we, we've received dates from the Office of School Improvement in reference to technical assistance sessions for next year that will impact our division and our priority and focus schools, specifically those principals. Those are dates that we will have to go to Richmond to get technical assistance, specifically aligned to our essential actions and their school improvement plans. So. I told you that I would be brief, that we would be brief today, unless you have any questions that ends our presentation for this month.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
The alignment of PB Young and Todd Water. Remind us what the impact that has on the status of the schools and the SIG funding and all of that?
In terms of the alignment, and I think you're specifically thinking of the status of the school?
Yeah, it's a different status levels and time in the program and so forth.
Todd Water Park specifically would take on the priority status of PB Young.
Which, which means exactly what?
They would be a priority school for, for three years.
But this is year three for Todd Water Park, and it's possible for Todd Water Park and Lennywood to both exit out in Cohort Two, as long as they're not in the bottom five percent. But what's unique to Todd Water Park situation is that they can exit out, because they're merging with PB Young, which is entering as Cohort Four. They must stay priority, whether they qualify to exit out or not.
Okay, so Todd Water stays longer, is that correct?
Possibly, because there's still a possibility that they can still fall in the bottom five percent and would have to continue anyway. But since they are merging with PB Young, they will take on that, the AMO status. When schools merge, they take on the AMO status and accreditation status of the sister school. So either way, they will have to continue for three additional years.
So technically, are there two, are both schools still then assessed separately, or are they now considered one big?
PB Young will follow the accreditation status of whatever Todd Water Park's accreditation is that. If they're fully accredited, if they're won, if they're denied. Since they're the three-five school, PB Young will automatically assume that status, and the same with AMO status. Because that's the test they raise at Todd Water Park.
I think you had another part to your question, though, and I was curious about the SIG funding. So when's the cycle of the SIG funding? When does that impact, and do the principals have good training to know what they can do to get and obtain that funding in a timely way, in a year's worth, so that they can really apply it for the school year?
Okay, well, PB Young, because they're Cohort Four, they will have continual spending for the next three years. We've already received their warrant notification. But this year and for next year, we just can't put next year's spending into place until October one for PB Young. Todd Water Park situation is a little unique, and Dr. Holoman, when she met with us on Monday, said that she would check on that status for us, because technically, at the end of year three, you usually exit out. But if you continue, it's different pots of funding they have to look at. So we are not, we're kinda, well, not really guaranteed funding, but because they're, they're priority status, they'll be required to continue unless it changes with the lead turnaround partner, have all of those sanctions. turnaround park and have all of those, um, sanctions or requirements. So they will more than likely get funding to support their efforts. But their current funding cycle ends September thirtieth.
And are the principals well versed enough in the SIG funding, uh, in obtaining the SIG funding and executing on it, that they can implement on it and make use of the money in a timely way during the school year?
Once funding is received, but what usually happened is the funding, the current funding cycle ends September thirtieth.
Right.
And then October one is when the new cycle will, will pick up.
And can they start spending day one?
Well, I would say first of all, to, to spend the money, they have to submit a, a plan and a budget before, uh, they, they get anything. So it's all budgeted and, uh, and once they submit that budget, then that budget is approved by the, by the, by the VDOE, uh, before we can, we, we receive it. And so, uh, at this point, it's been planned out for, uh, those Cohort Four schools has been received, has been planned in terms of how it would be, uh, be implemented or how they would use it.
I guess just ultimately my aim is that they obtain that funding in a timely way for it to be useful in the school year.
And I would think that, yeah, that's, that's been planned for and accounted for.
So, so the, the money is typically available October third.
For the following school year, but what we try to do is plan the funding since one grant funding period ends September thirtieth and the next one picks up, October one.
Right.
We try to plan the funding to carry us through September thirtieth, so it won't disrupt services. But sometimes what will happen is even though October one is when a new funding cycle starts, like this year with Cohort Three schools, we didn't really get the funding until December. So not until you physically get the money and the award notification from the state can you spend the funding. So really, it all depends upon能不能get the notification, award notification letters from the state.
Right.
So, so with that, that means that on our end, we appropriately and properly plan for anticipated utilization of funds. However, there's no guarantee around when the funds are going to be rolled out. And so, that, you know, that, some of that is out of our control to a degree. But based on, uh, the previous years, we can have a pretty good idea about when those funds would be available. So to answer your question, I feel pretty confident about what we're doing as far as planning and anticipated receiving of funds. But it is a bit questionable as to when the funds will be received by schools, et cetera. But typically, this year, we receive them when, um...
Late November, early December.
Yeah, and see, and then that's not due to anything that internally occurred. It's just when the state rolls it out, so that's...
Just one other follow up there. So with the school improvement office, is the end result that we're getting more funds for all of our schools, less funds, about the same, or we're just using it differently? What's the, the impact with that then?
Um, I would say, one, there is a difference in utilization. Um, and funds to fund that particular endeavor would impact, uh, I think impacted two schools, three schools in terms, four schools in terms of being able to provide those services and resources. But when we compare the, the amount of money across those schools, um, and the delivery of the, the plan, we don't see that as a negative impact on the delivery. Want to speak closer to that?
We, we see it as an ability to, to get more, uh, support, more targeted, uh, support for those schools through the use of, uh, the personnel that will be, uh, that will be employed or hired to, to deliver those services. So, uh, kinda just taking to control, uh, the improvement of our own schools. So I see it as more, more targeted and with the, uh, more targeted, more specific, uh, more rapid improvement.
So maybe at the works, at the next work session, just to get a better understanding of what the changes are with the improvement office and the funding and how it impacts the delivery with...
Charting schools and their amount of funding for each school and what they will be able to utilize.
Yeah, just whatever the update is, there aren't any changes we need to...
Sure. Thank you. I have a brief one oh five from the resources.
Chairman Houston, members of the board, three point oh five from the resources will consist of voluntary transfer process report. Dr. Burks.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. King. Um, I'd like to take a brief moment to provide an update to you regarding the voluntary transfer process for the district this year. Um, this was the first time that we allowed an online process. Um, it was a result of lots of feedback from teachers within the division. There were concerns about, um, principals finding out if teachers were requesting a voluntary transfer. And so we, um, actually were able to have that online this year and we received very positive feedback, um, regarding doing so. Um, the process, as you know, is so that we can retain, um, our teachers. We would prefer to be able to move them around within the district as opposed to them fleeing the district and going to other school divisions. And so again, we use that as a retention strategy. Um, this year, the process actually opened on January the thirteenth and it closed on March the seventh. And then we received lots of feedback from teachers saying, "We just need a little bit more time." So we extended the period for another, an additional week. And principals were allowed to interview between April the seventh and May the twenty third. So it gave them plenty of time to reach out to teachers. Teachers, teachers could in turn, um, contact principals if they were interested in interviewing for vacant positions at their school. Certainly, there's criteria for, for teachers to participate in this process. They have to be endorsed in the areas that they are interested. Um, and certainly, they cannot be a probationary teacher unless there is an extenuating circumstance. And when there is an extenuating circumstance, the staffers and myself and human resources, we reach out to the executive directors of schools to get approval for teachers to participate in the process. Um, and I, I, I know you will be interested in, as you reviewed the data, you probably had questions about specific schools and the transformation initiative. Please know that when we implemented this process, there was no communication about the transformation initiative. So it wasn't that the teachers knew, for example, that Lafayette would be closing or that the four elementary schools would, would be reconfigured. That information had not been shared with, with the public at that time. And so that did not, um, have anything to do with the, the results. So we wanted to bring that to your attention as well. So if I could just bring your attention to the chart that I provided to you. Um, it has a listing of the individual schools, the teacher head count at each location, the numbers of teachers requesting, um, a transfer from that location, as well as the percentage of teachers requesting to leave that location. And we also thought it would be useful for you because I know a lot of times you are interested in knowing about, um, teachers who were able to successfully transition out of a location, especially if it's a, a school that's challenged by retention. So we provided that data to you as well. And finally, we gave you, um, the district's total numbers in that regard. So, um, at this time, I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you have about the process or about data. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
She said she didn't have it in front of you.
Oh.
I, I have one question. If I may, please. Does this strategy hinder or hurt our ability to staff hard to staff schools?
Um...
And, and if so, how?
Well...
Or how can we prevent it?
Well, I think it would be difficult for us to exclude certain schools from the process because then teachers could potentially have a grievance about, just because I'm assigned to this specific school, I'm not allowed to participate in the process. So we try to make it a fair and equitable process. And again, we, we'd like to retain our teachers in the, in the division. And so we want to give them as many options as possible to remain.
So how do we dovetail strategies to continue to staff these, uh, our, our challenged schools, um, with highly, uh, qualified and highly effective teachers?
We have made the focus in priority schools a priority for staffing. Um, when we interview candidates, we always make sure that we staff these schools first. And certainly, we don't force teachers on certain schools. For example, and this is just an example, if we had an elementary vacancy at Lindenwood, when we are able to secure a highly qualified candidate for the district, we would deploy these teachers out to the hard to staff schools. And if the principal feels as if it's a good fit for the school, then, and the teacher feels it's a good fit, then they are secured at that particular location. However, again, because of the turnover, we certainly wouldn't want to exclude a highly qualified teacher from being reassigned to another, um, location in the district.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we've worked closely with the executive directors. When we have teachers that, um, are high performing teachers in buildings or locations that are not challenged by retention, the executive directors can administratively transfer those teachers to hard to staff schools. And we've implemented that strategy, strategy quite successfully this school year.
Dr. Burks, I think you track this year over here, first, first time you've had the ability to have a year's worth of data.
Um, yes, we do have data from last year. And so you would want to...
Yeah, I think it would be good to see comparative data.
Sure.
Cause we're kind of looking at this in isolation. And then there are some schools that are quite high frankly, at fifty percent or at forty some percent. So I don't know if that was the norm this time from last or whatever, so...
And, and pretty much so, especially in the schools challenged by retention. But one thing I'd like you to keep in mind, it's not unusual when you have a new building principal, that the percentage of teachers requesting to leave, um, is, is not uncommon for it to be high. Because you have a new principal, maybe the, the previous year, you had a principal that was, for example, well liked and respected and maybe the expectations changed the next year. And so sometimes change is difficult. And so teachers want to explore other options. So that's not uncommon.
If we could just see the comparative data, that would be helpful. And then if we could see the data after the voluntary transfer request window took place with the transformation work. Cause I know there's voluntary transfers still happening right now.
This, this process was separate from that process.
Exactly, right.
So you'd like to see...
Well, I noted in the note, requests made during the transformation, school voluntary transfer request windows are not reflected. So is that some data that we'll get in addition or separate apart?
And, and basically, that is after we, um, reassigned teachers to a home school. We still gave teachers an opportunity to participate in the voluntary transfer process. So we kept that data separate. So we can certainly provide that to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, three point oh six, operations.
Three point oh six, operations, um, consists of a brief, uh, update. I think it would not be new news to the board around, uh, current PPEH status. You know that at this point, we've had an opportunity to, uh, hear public engagement from Campus Stella as well as, um, Richard Bowling and last evening, Larchmont. With that said, I'd ask Dr. Simmons to provide any other, uh, supporting details that she deems necessary.
We've had really good community input, not as well at the first Campus Stella meeting as we had hoped, but at the second meeting, we had full engagement and participation from students and parents, it went well. The information that they shared, uh, in disagreement with what the architects had presented, has been well received by the architects and we are doing some replanning. Along with them, we have a meeting on Friday to fully entertain what changes will occur as a result of that input. Richard Bowling had fantastic, uh, participation, full auditorium of people, lots of conversation around what they'd like to see happen with that building. And, um, we had a lot of participation from leaders within the community as well as parents and stakeholders. And finally, last night at Larchmont, we had a full house. And, uh, it was very interesting that the architects chose to approach the subject new versus renovation with that group. And, uh, they laid out a lot of facts visually for them to understand the condition that the building was in, as we consider what it is we're gonna do, uh, to provide a new building, a new structure. And, uh, I was quite pleased with the response and the reaction to the recommendation. So all is well. And, uh, we will, we took copious notes of every, um, comment that the community made and we will be reviewing that on Friday with the architects. And, uh, Dr. Thornton and Dr. Sebryni and I, along with Rex Gay, will be in conversation with them on Friday.
Questions?
Can you clarify the, uh, uh, number, the enrollment number that, uh, that we provided to the city for Campus Stella for this process? What was, what was the number that we actually gave them for, uh, programming at Campus Stella?
The PPA process, um, did, the RFP did not indicate a specific number. They considered pricing, um, that the city had allowed to build the new structure. And so every conversation that I've had and every meeting has stressed the fact that the board approved thirteen hundred seats. And we were told by representatives from the city that the city could not afford thirteen hundred seats. And so that's why that eleven hundred figure factored in. I reinforced my comments, uh, regarding, uh, the, uh, fact that the demographic study had not been done prior to the release of RFP, uh, for the, uh, demographic study had not been released. And so, um, the numbers from the demographic studies certainly did indeed support the need for an additional three hundred seats at minimum. And so, um, the builders understand that we need more seats than eleven hundred. And I would say we're moving in a positive direction.
So regarding the, the MOU that exists, um, between the school system and the city as far as programming and that is concerned, remind, remind us again what our ability is to have impact on, uh, what gets developed based upon that, that MOU in terms of seats and programming?
I would say that funding takes a serious override. And so, um, I think capacities relates to, um, costs. Uh, and given the fact that we have other schools that we have to build also, uh, have weighed in over, uh, input. And, but we are collaborating and, uh, I have not been silent at all about the fact that we need thirteen hundred seats. They have heard me repeatedly. And, uh, uh, it's not over.
But I, I would just add that in terms of the programming piece, the city has been, once they understood conceptually where we were trying to go, they have been very receptive in terms of the programmatic needs. Now, we're still having conversations around the number of seats in this one particular building, but they've been receptive. So we, I feel comfortable saying we're driving the train from the programming perspective. It's the other issue we're still asking about.
And at Larchmont yesterday, um, I didn't get a chance to really hone in on the, the classroom sizes, but I know at one point there was some differences there. Do you recall what, where that stands now in terms of, uh, the square footage of the classroom sizes at Larchmont?
I know that the square footage of, uh, cafeteria and there was some discrepancy with regard to what the architects intended and what they currently had. So there are some unanswered questions about size and that will be on the table on Friday for us to discuss. Um, they're gonna use this time to do some measures and they'll come back. We'll be talking numbers on Friday.
Yeah, a technical question that I don't know if you all can answer or not, but during the presentation, they identified the floodplain and, uh, then when they showed the positioning of the school, it was, you know, back in that area. Technically, what is that, what is that saying? That, uh, I know we have the requirement to go three feet up, but the positioning of the school and where that floodplain line is, is that, that's indicating what exactly? Do you, can you, do you, or maybe, do you know, or is that something we could just ask them?
It's a technical question and Rex, uh, probably will weigh in here, but I do know that was stated by the architect that if they, if the, if the structure itself goes into that floodplain, they're gonna have to raise the school so, so many feet. And so that's gonna distort the rest of, of the campus. So accommodations will be made to make sure that that flood, floodplain is taken care of regarding the construction.
Yeah, I know they mentioned, cause the city has the requirement for the, for the flooding, but I'll just, you know, with all the, I don't know if y'all saw the... But I'll just, you know, with all the, I don't know if you all saw the articles in the Washington Post and all of that, just the positioning of the school, I didn't know whether or not that was making it more subjective to, uh, rising tides or less, or, or what? Or we just need to ask it of the architects?
Positioning, positioning of a school, I mean, you got to stay within a certain distance, but by the same time, uh, the elevation of the school is going to make a difference.
By how many feet, I mean?
Excuse me.
How many feet?
That I don't know right off the top, right, right off the top of my head. But, um, I do know we did, we have discussed those, you know, that area. It's just been a while since we, we met about it.
I actually had that, I was literally typing up my notes for Larchmont last night, and I had two questions. One was the flood. Um, and Campus Stella as well, I asked the very same question because we're positioning that building on the property, and I'm wondering if we need to raise the building in order to account for fifty years from now when the water's a lot higher. So, for the both of those properties, I think we need to take that into consideration. And not just the building itself, but the ingress to and from the campus.
We did borings in, on Campus Stella's site to make sure that the land could accommodate the structure, given the elements that we deal with every time we have a storm. But I can tell you, I don't, I don't think we've considered the fifty-year from now, uh, conversation. So, we will put that on the table on Friday. It's a good point.
And then, my second question was similar to Ronnie's earlier, but, okay, so, the Larchmont design was for seven hundred or so students.
Right.
And we're adding pre-K in that design. Did we add enough to account for the choice, which will be in a year or two from now at Larchmont as well?
The current enrollment is at five hundred at Larchmont. Dr. Malisi, right about six, seven?
So, we're close to seven hundred. So, we're already close to the seven hundred. So, if we add the pre-Ks, which I think there were five, that's eighteen times five. And then, you add the choice, are we accommodating all of those potential students?
Based on the projections that we received with, uh, our internal office, as class sizes decrease, we have some that will increase. And it's supposed to balance and still allow for choice. So, um, given the numbers that we got from Dennis Footy, we should be good.
But if we literally filled up all this pre-K with the eighteen, we're already exceeding the capacity on the document right now. And then, that doesn't allow for choice. So, I'm just asking for us to take that number into consideration because I think we're already short.
Okay, noted.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, I have three point oh eight, uh, Community Engagement, Dr. King.
Community Engagement, of course, um, Dr. Stewart is not with us. He, uh, of course, had, uh, some information related to crime line. But I will, uh, uh, report and update the board in reference to community engagement that, uh, our Communications Department, uh, has been very busy, uh, around this week, uh, Monday of this week. We, uh, recognized our retirees. And I would like to again, uh, say thank you to those people that, individuals and employees classified and certified that provided extensive service to our division for many, many years. And, uh, that was covered by the Community Engagement Department as well. And I'm sure you will see some footage from that soon. As well as the, uh, Department has also covered the, uh, community engagement across the, the, uh, discussions related to PPEA. And, uh, the exchange across our stakeholders with parents, uh, families, business owners, and others. That has been covered and carried as well, um, to be transparent and provide for the board throughout, uh, as well as, uh, the notion of recent high school recognition. And I think some of that will appear tonight. Uh, and I think, uh, in my view, that has been, been covered at a high level by the Communications Department. And I think we get, we are, uh, improving the way that we, uh, report widely to our stakeholders around those things that are very positive in our division as we move forward, as well as being transparent around our challenges and what we're doing to address those challenges. I had the opportunity to as well attend, uh, Maury's, uh, Choice Program as it relates to, uh, the partnership with, uh, from a medical standpoint. And V M N S, yes. And, uh, uh, great opportunity to engage with families and see the accomplishments and millions of dollars that were secured for scholarships for those individuals to move forward into the next leg of their education. And I mention that too because that's a part of transformation because it, it really connects with what we want to do at the early level with the elementary students being even more prepared to choose once, uh, they reach that, that, uh, that level and see that increased. Uh, lastly, um, uh, as recent as today, I know that we've had some teachers from, uh, Booker T. Washington High School that will receive recognition from CERN in terms of some things that, uh, they were able to accomplish to help, uh, begin to move the school forward, continue to move the school forward. And we're, we're eager to see that covered from the Community Engagement and Communications, uh, uh, initiative as well. So, with that, I close, uh, comments around community engagement.
Questions, comments on, uh, Community Engagement? Okay, that brings us to the, uh, end of today's work session agenda. And, um, while we agreed not to do agenda planning, I would like to at least, uh, do a, um, just an overview of what's coming up so that we're on the same page. Uh, of course, tonight, there is the, uh, recognition ceremony to take place. And for neither or not, there's going to be time to eat and digest, uh, maybe even swallow. Um, tomorrow morning, we have the training on the Super Ten, the new evaluation, uh, that will come into effect, uh, July first. And, uh, for those who are committed to the, um, student appeal, next Wednesday, it won't be necessary. Got information essentially been in this meeting that, uh, you don't need to do that. What time will we start that meeting? So, we will begin at one thirty, one thirty with our deliberation. And then, of course, the... Correct, that's correct, yes. Okay, that takes us to, uh, next Wednesday. Questions or comments on, uh, the agenda or any of the upcoming meetings or events for June?
All right, so June eleventh, I thought it was two o'clock. Are we changing that to one thirty?
Uh, yeah, I think we need, uh, good ninety minutes. I think we're going to push ourselves if we go with the sixty minutes. Does that work for everyone? So that we'll be able to begin the, uh, Student Support and Personnel Session at three P M. on time. And then, uh, for the final part of the evaluation, of course, is the nineteenth. We agreed to start that at eight A M. The nineteenth. All right? So, Dr. Robinson, anything else for the good of the order? No, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with the directions, Wendy, but thank you. Kevin Haywood?
Um, had an opportunity to go to the, um, N T C, the Norfolk Technical Center's, um, award ceremony, um, with, um, and, um, I was very impressed with the students that are there and the programs that they have there. And that's, that's something that perhaps could use even more reporting. And, uh, it's excellent, uh, achievements of students there under Mr., um, Monroe, I believe it is. And so, um, I just want to commend the program that is being, that, that is going on there and say to, that this is one of the things that makes Norfolk Public Schools, uh, shine, what's happening down at the N T C.
Thank you, Mr. O.
Just thanks again to the administration and Dr. King for your work on the budget. And we were fortunate enough to have additional funding this year from City Council for which I know we're all thankful. And I look forward to the state finalizing their budget, hopefully in the near future, so that we don't face an oddity at the end of this month. So, again, I just wanted to thank you all for your work towards that and appreciate a good day's work today.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Jordan? I'm good, thank you.
Did you hear that?
I just wanted to echo thanks to staff. Everybody was involved in the whole process of, of getting us to where we are, uh, today and being able to present a budget that we feel, uh, comes close to, uh, preparing us in a way that we can, can continue to move forward. So, I would like to offer a personal thank you to each and every one. Of course, Dr. Thornton is the Chief Financial Officer. Uh, but in addition, all of the departments, uh, that are headed up by Dr. Simmons and Dr. Savigny, and everybody that was involved in that process, executive directors and anybody in the departments that were involved, all played a major role in searching to, uh, do this in a way that it would, would, uh, again, have a least impact on, uh, the individual classroom. So, I would like to say a personal thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Uh, I think today's work is, uh, a clear, a clear indication of the positive results from our governance leadership training. We started this format back in November as a result of that training. And of course, a recommendation as we continue to look at the efficiency of our meetings, uh, and this recommendation on this format, uh, some, of course, came from you and, and, um, aligning the work session directly to the, uh, areas of the strategic plan. Cause, and, and consequently, I think the, um, presentations are more pointed. And, uh, because we're getting it all in real time, we're able to get a really good snapshot of where we are. And, uh, today, we had a good time to receive the presentations and, and, uh, answer and receive, ask questions and get answers. And I want to thank the administration for working with us patiently to really try to refine the presentations to really provide us with what we need to do the work we have to do as a governance leadership team. So, thank you all, uh, very much. Having said that, uh, this part of our meeting is adjourned, adjourned, and, uh, we have time for, um, recess before the, uh, awards recognition ceremony.